Call to order a special meeting for the Normal Local Liquor Commission. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Kuss.
Here.
Mr. Fritz.
Here.
Mr. Preston.
Here.
Mr. McBride.
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Here.
Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
Ms. Gaines.
Here.
The purpose of this meeting is to consider the approval of a Class C license for Highland Management Group LLC doing business as Diamonds at 616 West Rab Road, Suite B in Normal. Again, it's a Class C beer and wine license. We've received all the appropriate background information in terms of menu and whatnot. So, motion for approval?
Move approval. Second.
Is there discussion on this item? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Fritz.
Aye.
Mr. Preston.
Aye.
Mr. McBride.
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy.
Aye.
Ms. Gaines.
Aye.
A Class C liquor license is approved for Highland Management Group. That's our business special meeting tonight, a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Preston.
Aye.
Mr. McBride.
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy.
Aye.
Ms. Gaines.
Aye.
Mr. Fritz.
Aye.
Mayor Kuss.
Aye. Call to order a regular meeting for the Normal Town Council for December 7th, 2015. Please call the roll.
Mayor Kuss.
Here.
Mr. Fritz.
Here.
Mr. Preston.
Here.
Mr. McBride.
Here.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Here.
Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
Ms. Gaines.
Here.
We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We begin with an omnibus agenda, and these are items that are considered routine in nature and will be handled by one vote unless a council member would like to pull an item for discussion. I'd like to be excused on voting on any bills I may have incurred in my duties as mayor. Your silence.
I would like to pull the items E and F that kind of go together concerning signage.
C and F.
E and F.
E.
E as in egg.
Thank you.
The two signage ones.
I'd ask to be excused for voting on the Bloomington Offset Bill.
Motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
The items we are considering tonight are approval of the minutes of the public hearing of November 16th, 2015, and approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 16th, 2015, approval of town of Normal expenditures for payment as of December 2nd, 2115, a motion to approve the 2016 town meeting calendar, a motion to authorize an amendment to the fiscal year 2015-2016, social security and IMRF budgets for the general fund, a resolution extending a license agreement with Burlington Trailways for access to Uptown Station as a transportation provider, a resolution authorizing the execution of a supplemental pipeline crossing agreement with the Union Pacific Railroad for a storm sewer crossing at Broadway Avenue located at railroad milepost 124.2, and a resolution accepting warranty dues for the right-of-way on Rab Road from Annicate, Landra, and Weber Farms. Please call the roll.
Mr. Fritz.
Aye.
Mr. Preston.
Aye.
Mr. McBride.
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy.
Aye.
Ms. Gaines.
Aye.
Mayor Kuss.
Aye. The omnibus is approved with the exception of two items. Item E is a resolution to waive the formal bidding process and accept a quotation from Valley City Signs for the production and installation of Uptown signage. Ms. Lorenz?
I'd like to move for that.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Lorenz.
Okay. Thanks for allowing me to bring these up for discussion. They kind of go together. They're both concerning the sign, the gateway sign proposal for Uptown. And I would just kind of like to raise for some discussion a couple of concerns I have around, really, I guess it's associated with the cost of the gateway signs. And as I look forward and think about how the impact of potential future changes in Uptown might impact the placement of those signs, the fact that we are looking at potentially changing the traffic flow on College and Mulberry. So those are a couple of things that came to my mind. I do like the part about the wayfinding for parking, and so in that regard, I'm more interested, I think, in wayfinding towards Uptown than I would be to spend this money now on a gateway announcement or demarcation. A little bit of research I did unofficial or unscientific, as it might have been, in talking with some of the shop owners, there is a concern about actually wayfinding from Veterans Parkway and Main Street, sometimes, you know, on the telephone while they're on Veterans Parkway, bringing them into town. And interestingly, there was also some concern about wayfinding within our Uptown district. Kind of the circle being, you know, east dividing the east and the west a little bit, there's a desire for more signage that says, you know, shops this way as you head east towards, oh, say where the Peapod is and beyond Normal and so forth. So, I'm concerned that we're missing an opportunity here to put some money towards wayfinding and concerned about the dollars associated with this gateway.
Any comments?
I do have a comment. I appreciate the concern. Ms. Lorenz and I discussed this actually over the weekend, and we acknowledge that it has always been our intent and continues to be to erect additional wayfinding signs throughout the community directing people, motorists, to the Uptown area. You'll notice in this particular line item, even with the expense of the Uptown signs, there's a little over a $7,000 surplus. That can go a long way for just basic wayfinding signage. If we're talking just basic signs on signposts in strategic locations throughout the community, particularly the Veterans Parkway area that Ms. Lorenz mentioned is a critical area. And I've discussed it with Mr. Tully about using that surplus to have some additional wayfinding signs that might say, you know, the historic shops in Uptown Normal, you know, this way, located at some strategic areas in other parts of the community. And I think frankly, those are fairly inexpensive signs, and 7,000 would go a long way towards getting a number of those installed. As far as the Uptown gateway signs, that's always been part of the plan. It's just taken us a while to get that done. Certainly, it's possible those signs may need to be adjusted location-wise at some point when the road configuration is changed as a result of the Uptown 2.0 plan, but candidly, that will probably be quite a ways out. I would say it's probably, you know, probably three or four years. We can certainly wait and have the signs installed at that time, but these are, the signs are such that they can be relocated if we need to adjust the location. So, we'd like to go ahead and get them purchased. I think they are an important component in announcing when particularly motors have arrived in the Uptown area. And so, in some cases, you know, coming in on College and Mulberry, you might drive through before you even know you're in Uptown, but this clearly is, lets you know that this is a special place, and hopefully, people who were not planning to stop will take the opportunity to stop and look around once they get into this area. So, we recommend to go forward, and then we would plan on using the savings for some other wayfinding signs around the community.
Mr. Preston.
I have a question or two on the rendering for the gateway signs that we see on, I think it's E, are we at E5 or E6, I guess it would be, in our packets. I know a couple months back, something came to council that tried to look at creating an easier opportunity for highlighting maybe some of the festivals or things that are going on around Uptown. In that case, it was LED signage, but my understanding by looking at the rendering here, the fabricated aluminum base, I assume there's not enough height in that where banners could be attached potentially as we have things going on in Uptown? Or has there been any thought into incorporating that kind of element into the gateway signs?
Well, you are correct in that the base that's shown as part of the original design really wouldn't be sufficient to put a banner. In fact, we'd probably plan to have some ground-level landscaping there to sort of decorate the sign, and I don't think it would be our intent or preference to use that particular venue for advertising events. You know, that was not part of the original thought process, but, you know, it's certainly something that can be discussed.
Yeah, I don't have a strong feeling on it one way or another. Just wanted to ask the question.
Further on the item? Please call the roll.
Mr. Preston.
Aye.
Mr. McBride.
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz.
No.
Mr. McCarthy.
Aye.
Ms. Gaines.
Aye.
Mr. Fritz.
Aye.
Mayor Kuss.
Aye. The resolution is approved. Item F is a resolution to waive the formal bid process and accept a quotation from Champagne Signal for installation of electrical power and foundations for Uptown signage. Ms. Lorenz.
I'd like to move for that for discussion.
Second.
Ms. Lorenz?
No further discussion from me at this point.
Is there further discussion on this item? Please call the roll.
Mr. McBride.
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz.
No.
Mr. McCarthy.
Aye.
Ms. Gaines.
Aye.
Mr. Fritz.
Aye.
Mr. Preston.
Aye.
Mayor Kuss.
Aye. The item is approved. We have a couple of items of general orders tonight. The first is a resolution authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement with Normal Lodging LLC for hotel project to be located at Eight Traders Circle in North Normal. Motion for approval? So moved.
Second.
Is there discussion on this item? Hearing?
Thank goodness, maybe?
Yeah. I was just gonna say, I wish them all the luck, because we really would like to have a facility there, so.
We actually have a representative from Swift Hospitality in the audience tonight, so if there are questions.
They are as anxious as we are to see this happen, because they've been working on it for a number of years and paying taxes on the property and all those kinds of things. So I can tell you they're very anxious to get started, and indicated that if things go as they plan, they will be starting work very shortly after the first of the year. So we are certainly excited that it appears that the pieces have all come together finally, and this project can move forward after a long period of startup, so we're hopeful.
Further on this item? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy.
Aye.
Ms. Gaines.
Aye.
Mr. Fritz.
Aye.
Mr. Preston.
Aye.
Mr. McBride.
Aye.
Mayor Kuss.
Aye. That resolution is approved. Item 7 is an ordinance authorizing the 2015 property tax levy. Motion for approval?
Move approval. Second.
Is there discussion on this item? Hearing, hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. McCarthy.
Aye.
Ms. Gaines.
Aye.
Mr. Fritz.
Aye.
Mr. Preston.
Aye.
Mr. McBride.
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Aye.
Mayor Kuss.
Aye. The ordinance is approved. Item 8 is an ordinances approving the abatement of the 2015 property taxes for debt service. Move approval?
Second.
Thank you. This is an exercise we go through every year. Because we have general obligation bonds, they're supported by general fund levies if we're not able to, or general funds, if we're not able to pay with other bond proceeds or revenue sources, and so we have, every year we have to abate those levies, and that's what we're doing here. Discussion on this item? Please call the roll.
Ms. Gaines.
Aye.
Mr. Fritz.
Aye.
Mr. Preston.
Aye.
Mr. McBride.
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz.
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy.
Aye.
Mayor Kuss.
Aye. That ordinance is approved. We have two items of new business. The first is a motion to approve the fiscal year 2016 to 2021 Community Investment Plan, our CIP. Thank you.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. And Mr. Peterson, I think we have a brief overview?
Andrew Hune is gonna provide just a brief presentation. We don't plan to walk through the CIP line by line, but he's just gonna give an overview, and then we're prepared to respond to any questions that you may have about any of these items. Again, this, the CIP basically reflects our plan for major construction projects, roads, bridges, parks, stormwater projects, water and sewer projects, that will be incorporated into the five-year operating and capital investment budget that you will see in January for the first time. And so, we break this out, the capital projects, to give you a little bit more time to review those, as it is very difficult to review all the capital projects at our budget work session, since there's so much focus on operating expenditures. So, this is your first look at the capital projects. If the motion is approved, staff will incorporate all of these projects into the budget that you will see in January, as I said. And again, this is a plan, these are not etched in stone, these projects. Each one will be further vetted and discussed when we come forward with contracts or requests for proposals, and you'll also have another shot at them if you have some second thoughts or some additional priorities you'd like to consider. You'd have another shot at discussing some of these at the budget review session on January 14th, I believe, is when that's gonna be held. So I'll turn it over to Andrew with that, after that preamble.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Actually, Mr. Peterson covered virtually almost everything I was gonna say right now. Did much, much better.
Great minds think a lot.
So I'll skip down to essentially what the report contains. It has 119 projects within it. It shows about a little over $55 million of spending in the current year, the next five years. As Mr. Peterson mentioned, it aligns directly with our annual five-year budget program, so we'll implement those changes right into that project, right into that budget. It is a very interactive report, and it's available online, actually as we speak. Citizens can go out to www.normal.org, go up to Departments, and under Finance, it's a budget-related document, we keep it in the Finance web page. Go over, hang on a second, and go over to Community Investment Plan, CIP, and it shows down here, you click on this link, it gives some background, the report itself and what it is, and then you can click here, 2016-2021 CIP, and it pulls up this document. Very colorful document. It essentially breaks things into four different categories and several different funding sources. In terms of categories, you can see right here, Parks and Open Space is one of them. This would include multiple projects from playgrounds to tennis court resurfacing to trail extension projects and so forth. You can see in terms, you can go down here and see now Public Facilities. This can kind of run the gambit of all our public facility improvements. It can be a demolition of a property, it can be HVAC replacement, it can be roof replacements. And also, the main number in this particular category has to do with our planning for getting folks from one side of the tracks to the other, in terms of that discussion. You can also see that up in this corner here, the right upper corner, it shows capital, a drop-down menu. MFT stands for Motor Fuel Tax. That's a funding source, it's related mostly to roads. Click on that, it pulls up the projects right in that area. Again, this is all street work, bridge work, travisinal work and so forth. Going down a little further to Water, our utilities, Water and Sewer Operations have their own set of projects. Utility Service is a category, one of the four we have. You can see from there the five-year spending plan for the current year, and then all the out-years too. A nice thing about this report is also, if you want to see more detail on a particular project, you can click on it. You can see that I scrolled down here, it turns to the hand with the index finger. You can see here, if we clicked on, let's say, this Taft Avenue and Green Bar Drive, it gives you more information and actually provides a map that you can pull up and give you a direct visual of where the property is gonna be approved, or the waterman replacement. Again, Taft between Hershey and Green Bar. To look at a few more of those, in terms of water system generation, click on that, it's a fairly generic title. Again, it gives you more detail, and it just gives you a sense of the reader what it might look like in terms of a generator. Again, it gives you a feel for the product and the work behind it. And we'll pick one last one here, that's kind of Sand Blast and Paint. That just shows, you know, obviously he's only working on that project. Again, the idea is to provide more information to the residents, to give you a deeper sense of what's going on, and to certainly show you the funding by year, for each fiscal year for the five-year plan, and by category. Sewer, same situation. Again, projects here, and then of course, we also have stormwater, parkland dedication, also some grant money we use to fund projects for the CDBG. And also regarding this project, you can also see we have below here, this unfunded area. These are projects that are on the radar screen, and for a variety of reasons, aren't necessarily ready to go into the funded section, although every year, several projects will flip from unfunded to funded as we go through the budget process. Again, they're on the radar screen, there might not be the right time or the right funding available at this point in time, but they're up for discussion constantly. And you can also click on those to get information in terms of what's going on with those also. In total, as I said, the projects that are funded, about $55 million. Unfunded projects are about $130 million, and these are projects that we will certainly review going forward. One thing we want to call out, if you will, as you know, the council recently passed the 1% sales tax. We have programmed that money into the budget for year one, from going, that 1%, from going 1.5 to 2.5, that provides about $6.2 million of additional revenue that can be allocated to programs and operations or capital projects. We have not programmed anything beyond year one, except for the mental health contribution that's been agreed to. So in year one, we have all the $6.2 million programmed. In year two, three, four, and five, we just have the 1.5 for mental health being programmed. So really, we have approximately $4.5 million that's really left for discussion in terms of where the most efficient way to spend that money is. It could go to capital projects, it could go to some kind of operation. But again, that's a larger debate and part of the budget process as we move forward in the coming weeks.
In fact, as we've discussed, the sales tax proceeds in what I'll call the out-years, years two through five, that will be probably a subject of conversation with the council once we get into the fiscal year a little bit further. I think we were waiting to see what our neighbors to the south were going to do with their sales tax proceeds, and also to wait and see if some, were some other priorities that became a little clearer. So we'll probably, again, sometime late spring, probably early summer, ask you to consider how you want those out-years to be programmed, knowing that there's flexibility, you can always make changes if there are, you know, new priorities developed, but at least that will give us a little bit better roadmap as to exactly how those funds are likely to be used over the next five years.
One last comment really, and we also have the department heads who are available to go into these specific projects, give you more detail if you want. Again, we're spending about $55.8 million for five years out of this process planning, and that may or may not sound like a lot of money to you, it's a lot of money to me, it seems like. But also, it's important to know that our bond funding process, we have about $11.3 million right now scheduled for bond projects. That's not part of this planning process, that's part of the bond issue process that we cover and go over with supporting those projects. We keep it separate, but it's still part of a major capital project spending. And also, not so completely tied to this, but our replacement funds, we're probably spending about over $20 million in terms of capital improvement and capital replacement funds for vehicle and equipment. So really, overall, in addition to this planning process, the bond proceeds that are funding those projects, and replacement funds, about almost $90 million of spending from the town for the next five years, which is a significant amount of money and a significant amount of resource going to the community and going to the services and equipment that we use to service the community. So it's a very good report, as Mark mentioned. We bring it to you in advance with the operating budget, so you can kind of take a look at the capital side of things, and then move into the operating side. And also, Mark mentioned, this is not the last time you'll see this information, it can be changed. Again, we want to give you a well-in-advance idea of what's happening with the programming for capital projects separately from the operating, and then we move forward from there.
Let me just add one other comment. You'll notice, for example, I think the slide in front of us, the top line, miscellaneous street resurfacing projects. So there's, some of our street resurfacing funding is reflected in the CIP. However, there's also a fairly large allocation for street resurfacing directly out of the general fund that's not reflected here. So there's some additional dollars for street resurfacing that don't show up. But more importantly, we're not showing in this particular document the individual streets that will be resurfaced, so, because those will be identified each individual year, and it's going to vary based upon funding availability and priorities. We do a condition assessment every year. Mr. Brown goes out and drives all the streets, and there are changes every year. So, we will be coming to you as we get into the fiscal year with the current year's prioritization for both resurfacing, and again, this year, we're spending a very large amount of money on concrete street repair and improvement. Those streets are not specifically listed in the CIP, because we don't, aren't sure exactly what they will be, but we have a pretty good idea at this point. We've already got a priority list put together, so we'll be bringing in to you about the same time, a list of concrete streets, specific streets that we're proposing for repair and rejuvenation this coming year. But they don't, the individual projects are not necessarily reflected on the CIP.
Great. Thank you. Discussion on the CIP?
My only comment would be that I don't, it's probably been more years than I realized, but we didn't used to do it this way. And it was very cumbersome at budget time to work through these things, and department by department, and so the decision several years back to break this out and address this, and just kind of have an ongoing, you know, list of projects and ranking them, and just like with the streets, sometimes from year to year, those priorities can change and shift on us, and just have it, treating it this way has been, I think, just a boon to the town's overall operations and us being able to be somewhat nimble and address needs as they arise, and really make better use of the funds available to us than we did previously. So it's a great tool, and it was a great decision several years ago, you know, by staff to, let's break this out and present it in a different way. And the way the format's been improved with the interactivity, like you were showing, you can actually see locations, you can see what something might look like, and it's a great tool, and something that I hope those who have that level of interest in town business would take advantage of.
Yeah, there are definitely very distinct differences in the planning for capital and the planning for operating, and they lend themselves very good to separating, and it certainly added a lot of efficiency to the process, as you mentioned, going forward by having those separate. So we will likely continue to that for a long time, and we'll continue to tweak this software package and make it more meaningful. I think it's very good now, and we're proud of it, we'll keep making it better going forward.
Great. Further on the CIP? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. McBride?
Mr. Fritz touched on it, but just a thank you to staff for all the effort you put into, I mean, the interactivity is really pretty amazing, and it allows citizens to see it not only at a macro level, but also to kind of dive in. I mean, these are, if they're curious about something that they drive by and see, or something that's happening in their neighborhood, they can really zoom in and get a good look at what's happening there. So, I know that's not easy to do, so thanks for the effort.
Yeah, this is a homegrown version from our IT department who developed this, so it's, it works very well.
Further discussion? Mr. McCarthy?
As I do every year, compliment you on this, and my counterpart's always already said that relatively new people come into this process, I know we all enjoy curling up with a good, you know, gaffer, but be able to take this in chunks.
Your mic's not on.
You all missed that. But to be able to take this in chunks makes it easier for us, and I'm sure it requires you guys to be doing something kind of perpetually all of the time, looking at this stuff in the planning process, so hopefully it chunks it out, so it's not so overwhelming for you guys too, but it makes our job a lot easier.
Hopefully this too is something that you all can refer to during the year as you get questions from constituents, when they are wondering when a project is gonna be done, or they see something happening on their road, what's going on? And certainly, you're always welcome to call staff, we'll track that down, but if you, if you're, it's late at night, you want to pull it up, you, a lot of these things you can find in the CIP, you can click on it and get a little explanation, and all of a sudden, you're an expert. So I use it myself, because I can't remember all these things we're doing, and it is a great quick reference for all of us as we get questions. And we do have, there are constituents out there who do, do get... there are constituents out there who do get on this and give it a thorough look. They're clicking on projects and they're studying what we're doing. And so I think it is a very useful communications tool, as well as a good budgetary planning exercise.
I will ask, because I don't think I've noticed it, but some or all the projects have timelines associated with them?
Most of them do. Most of them, if you click on, and there's some that don't lend themselves to timelines, but most of them will show an expected timeline in there. So, yeah.
Further? Ms. Lorenz?
Well, just equally, I'm impressed by this document and am looking forward to looking up the Ironwood Force main replacement details. So that for my later reading. But a question first for you, Mr. Hune, and that is, if you could repeat for me, please, the amount of the 1% sales tax proceeds that you have assigned for this year?
Sure. Well, for the current year, nothing.
The current year, yeah.
For year one, which is 1617.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
It's about 6.1 million, a little over that, in terms of revenue that will be produced by that 1% sales tax increase for the whole year.
Right.
So 6.1. All of that has been programmed into the budget process. You know, the mental health contribution, various other topics. And this was all, several months ago, Mr. Peterson brought forward a document saying, here's our recommendation.
Right.
And those have all been selected and put into the budget. Now, again, you have an opportunity to look at those going forward and decide if you want to tweak some of them. But we've taken right from that report and put it into the budget. In the years two, three, four, and five, all we've budgeted specifically is the mental health contribution.
Gotcha.
So in essence, we have the 1.5 going to mental health and 4.5 or so sitting in a pot of budget money that's available to be allocated to something specific. We're showing it is all being spent in the budget, but clearly it'll need to be allocated to spending priorities, which as part of the budget process will be reviewed and discussed.
So you don't have a number of what's represented in this document necessarily?
Oh, no, just, I could get that for you.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind just at some point. That'd be great.
The number of what's?
What's in the CIP that represents year one funding for, from the sales tax?
Yeah, I thought it was 6.1.
Well, there is, it's 6.1 in total. A million dollars is going to concrete streets, and that's not really part of this document. We're doing the Kelly Basin Route 66, some cyber replacement, some normal roof theater stuff is part of that.
Right. I was just wondering, what was in this document? What was represented in this document?
Oh, I, I thought that was in there. 2.6.
Is it in there?
Yeah, that's correct.
There we go.
0.6 million.
You got it. There's the number. Perfect.
On the report.
Thank you. Then the only other comment of, maybe just for general consumption here, is an item I'd like to bring up. I noticed that it is on the not recommended list, and that is concerning our position on alley maintenance. And this is something I kind of want to dig into a little bit further with Mr. Peterson and perhaps Public Works and Engineering. And just to revisit, for the sake of the council here, too, to revisit a decision that I think has been, was made some time ago to forego some routine maintenance on alleys. And I know that they're small in number, but, you know, if seven or eight or nine years have gone by since we've revisited that decision, I'd like, at least during the budget process, for us to think about that. And so I bring it up now only because I noticed that it was on the not recommended.
Well, to make a point of clarification, we did not remove routine maintenance. The alleys are routinely maintained. What was removed was the resurfacing program. And that was done at the time the recession hit, and we had to pull back. And I think, at least my feeling is, we're not ready to put that back into a recommended program just yet. There may be a day, and there is, but it's hard for me to justify pulling money out of a street repair or another capital project for the sake of paving an alley that serves 10 to 20 people. It's something I would like to see do in the future at some time, but I just don't think we're at that point yet. Ms. Gaines?
Well, I was just gonna say, I think, you know, we made the decision just a year or two ago, that we're gonna put $6 million into the streets. And that's a real important piece that we do, and we're not there yet. We haven't finished that yet. And so I don't even, in my mind, we can't even begin to think of alleys when we still have streets that get a lot more use.
Further discussion on the CIP? Please call a roll.
Mr. Fritzen?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Ms. Gaines? Mayor Koos?
Aye. The ordinance, the motion is approved. Item 10 is a motion to approve appointments to the Human Relations Commission and Planning Commission. Please call a roll. I'm sorry. Motion for approval?
Motion for approval. Second.
This is an item of personnel. There will be no discussion unless a council member would like to take this to executive session. And seeing no such request, please call a roll.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Ms. Gaines?
Aye.
Mr. Fritzen?
Aye.
Mayor Koos?
Aye. The appointments are approved. And Ms. Gaines, would you read those appointments?
Being appointed to the Human Relations Commission is Alberto Espinosa. And that is, he's coming in to fill out the term for former Commissioner Arlene Josea, who was recently appointed to the Planning Commission. He, Mr. Espinosa, excuse me, I can't even read. He and his wife moved to Normal in 2007, and they have a daughter. And he works for the US Postal Service. So we're really glad to have him on board. And then also, we are appointing to the Planning Commission Bob Broad. And he is a citizen for 21 years in Normal, and he's been very active. He teaches at ISU and recently helped coordinate the Vigil for Peace and Human Rights in Uptown Normal, which was a great event one evening. It made me proud that, to live here in Normal. And so we want to welcome you to the Planning Commission, and thank you very much.
Mr. Broad is in the audience?
Yes.
And Mr. McBride, Mr. Espinosa is better known as?
Mailman Al.
Thank you. Before taking a motion for adjournment, are there concerns or comments? Ms. Lorenz?
This is actually a certificate of appreciation that I'd like to bring to everyone's attention that I was able to receive on behalf of the Town of Normal from the Unity Community Center. And they had, just before Thanksgiving, an appreciation dinner, and I attended. And so it says here, a certificate of appreciation presented with gratitude to the Town of Normal for your dedication, support, and commitment to the Unity Community Center dated November 24th, 2015. So they do some really, really great work out there.
Great. Mr. Peterson?
Just one quick item of good news. Senate bill, I think it was 2305, was passed by the State Senate unanimously, and it was actually signed into law by Governor Rowner this afternoon. And that will release a number of funding programs or funds from a number of programs to local government. One of them is motor fuel tax, which the state has been holding as a result of the budget impasse. So the House and Senate and Governor have agreed, they've agreed on something, which is a good sign. And they've agreed to release those funds. So we don't know when the check will come, but it'll probably take a little while to process. But that is good for us and good for many local governments who are relying on motor fuel tax funds to purchase salt and to fund snow removal activities. Hopefully, we want them to do that within the next few weeks, but the forecast looks pretty good. So that's good news. And also, that bill releases funds for gaming revenue. And very important for us is funds to support 911 call centers. And our call center, known as Metcom, does rely on those funds. And they were getting a little bit nervous because their reserves are slowly being depleted, because they're having to dip into reserves, because they're not getting those state transfer payments. And so Tony Cannon, who's the director of Metcom, I'm sure will sleep a lot easier knowing that this bill is passed and those funds will soon be transmitted to the 911 call centers, and they desperately need that. So good news out of Springfield for a change. So we're real pleased and we certainly thank all involved in getting that very important bill approved and ultimately signed into law.
Great. Further comments, concerns?
Holiday open house, or holiday, Christmas lunch, holiday lunch. Wednesday, 11 o'clock at the Marriott. We'd love to have all of you there if you want to show up. And I think employees appreciate having you there. It's a great event for our employees. And there will also be a little department head entertainment again this year, so something to look forward to or not look forward to. Depends on your perspective.
Motion for adjournment.
Two moved.
Second.
Please call a roll.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Mrs. Lorenz?
Aye.
Mr. McCarthy?
Aye.
Ms. Gaines?
Aye.
Mr. Fritzen?
Aye.
Mr. Preston?
Aye.
Mayor Koos?
We are adjourned. Thank you.